And welcome to Local Decision 2020 here on North Metro TV. I'm Rusty Ray and tonight we have a candidate forum for the special election to fill the opening on Anoka County Board of Commissioners in the seat from District 6. And we're joined by the two winners of the fall primary, and those are former Lino Lakes Mayor Jeff Reiner and former Spring Lake Park Mayor Cindy Hansen. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you Rusty.
And let's go over a little bit of the format here. Jeff and Cindy came in and we drew numbers to determine who would go first. And when I say that, we're going to have an opening statement from each, about 30 seconds. And then we'll have a series of questions that will allow each of them to answer. And we'll go in order, who will answer each question first. As long as I can keep up with it, we will go through that order in that way. And then we may have time at the very end for a bit of a brief statement in closing. Okay? So we will start with an opening statement from District 6 candidate Jeff Reiner.
Thanks Rusty. So my name is Jeff Reiner and for the last 20 years, I have been on the Lino Lakes City Council for the last 10 years as its mayor, up to just a couple of weeks ago. I did a lot of good things in the area. I've lived in the area for 44 years, moved there in 1975. And married to a wonderful woman for 31 years, Lisa. And we have three amazing daughters. Now, one is living in Seattle, one in New York, and one a mile from me and married. For work, I've been in business for 35 years. Currently have a company called Min Farm where we make recombinant proteins for medical research. And I'm running for Anoka County Commissioner now because I obviously think I'm the right person for the job, right experience, longtime resident, and I think I can make a difference.
Okay. Jeff Reiner, thank you very much. And now, an opening statement from Cindy Hansen.
Hi, I'm Cindy Hansen and I am running for Anoka County Commissioner because I care about this community. My husband and I bought our home in Lino Lakes seven years ago, and I've lived in Anoka County for over 34 years. The Blaine Mayor, Tom Ryan. The Lexington Mayor, Mike Murphy. The Circle Pines Mayor, Dave...well, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous.
Bartholomew.
Yes.
Sure.
Anoka County Commissioner, Robin West. Anoka County Commissioner, Mandy Meisner. All have endorsed me for this position, along with other mayors, councilmen, and board members throughout the county because they know I listen to people. I give people a voice and I hear people. And through that, I was able to bring in, the nine years I was mayor of Spring Lake Park, over $55 million worth of redevelopment for Anoka County, including the very first Hy-Vee grocery store.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Let's start with where we kind of left off. There was a primary election in November. What since November have you been doing to stay connected or to hear from the voters? And I want to start with Cindy.
Okay. I have been going to council and board meetings. Jeff and I actually just met with the watershed district too. So I've also been doing educational meetings, learning more and more about the district, along with door knocking and meeting the residents and finding out what their needs are.
Okay. Jeff, since the November primaries, what have you been up to?
Well, doing Christmas, which was awesome. But you know, since then, you know, talking with folks too. You know, you listed a bunch of endorsements. I think I'm up to about 30 different endorsements, all politically active people. In fact, the people that were in the Anoka County election with Cindy and I have now endorsed me, the ones that didn't make it, you know, Karen Ladico and Chris, or I should say Craig Johnson, not Hansen. And so I think the list of endorsements for me now is, like I said, up around 30. And just, you know, getting to know people, meeting people, going to the BPOUs and shaking hands and just, I guess, gaining more support, which it seems is happening.
Okay. The Anoka County Board of Commissioners at its board meetings currently does not allow for public comment, for an opportunity for people to speak to the board and as a collective body in person altogether at the same time. Do you want to see some sort of format that is formatted or is time appropriate or time regulated at the open monthly or twice monthly board meetings for the public to be able to do that, Jeff?
Yeah, so actually, when I became mayor, it's one of the first things that I did as mayor. It was one of my first actions was to bring public comment. They had public comment before, but it was prior to the opening of the mic and the opening of the meeting. And so I brought that into the meeting because I feel that's really important. You know, you want to talk to the council, you want to do it on TV, let's do it. We do have some rules for that. If there's a large group of people that are there that are going to come to the mic one after another and say the same thing, then I, you know, ask for a representative to speak for the group. But yeah, that is one of the things I feel strongly about is people having a voice, transparency, and for people having an opportunity to address us. And I guess I don't know why you wouldn't have that. So I'd be for doing that. Now, the Anoka County Board has many, many meetings and many subcommittees and committees, and I mean, they've got meetings, meetings galore. Do you want open comment at all of them? I don't know, that's something to discuss. They recently did have a vote on that. It was a split vote. I don't know why it would have been a split vote, but yeah, public comment's important.
What do you think Cindy? Do you think is there an opportunity to maybe include that in some sort of formal way?
Yes. That is something that we definitely agree on. I did the same thing when I was mayor, opened that up. It does need to have rules. People need to be respectful. And also, I think people really need to understand that when you come with a question, you're prepared with your question, but you need to give council members, board members, time to do research to find that answer for that question that you bring to the board. But as an elected official, I don't understand why you would not want the people who elected you to be invited to your meetings.
Okay.
With a time limit, of course.
With a time limit. Sure, sure, of course.
Yeah, I let somebody go 55 minutes once. We have a four-minute.
No.
A four-minute limit.
That's not going to work.
But no, I just let him go 55 minutes because I thought, you know, let's see where this goes.
Okay.
Didn't really go anywhere.
Good. Valuable things may come out of it. You never know.
Yeah, right.
Something else that the Anoka County Board of Commissioners is about perhaps to discuss, so we're taping this about three weeks before the special election, and as I understand it, it may come up in their workshop later this week to maybe then come before the full board. And that's something that's getting a lot of play nationwide because President Trump said, "I want localities to decide this. I want municipal level people to decide this." That's the issue of whether or not to welcome refugees. Many counties in the metro area have longstanding stances on this, saying, "Yes, we welcome refugees in." Ramsey County were just recently reaffirmed that, saying, "Yes, we would allow refugees here." How would you vote on this? How would you vote if it comes up in the next couple of months, which it goes through the process in May, and then you, one of you will be on the board? That's my question, is how would you vote on this? Would you vote to allow refugee or continue to allow, or whatever the case may be, in Anoka County, Cindy?
Well, first off, it won't come to a vote at this time, and I want people to know that. So it's kind of a leading question, but people have to realize too, that there is a difference between a refugee and an immigrant. And those are two separate issues, and I think a lot of times they get lumped together. And I would want to make sure that people really understand the difference.
It could be something where you would have public comment and people coming and sharing, or you would get emails, or you would get phone calls and have to take all that into account.
Yes. And I do know for a fact that commissioners now, like through Facebook emails, are getting comments on this issue.
Lots of comments.
Yes, yes.
What about it Jeff? If this comes up in the next, even if it's not here anytime soon, but maybe in the next year or so, or whatever the case may be, how would you vote on that as a commissioner?
Well, you know, there's a lot of debate to have on that yet, but I'm wondering what kind of problem we're solving. I mean, we're there to make decisions for the Anoka County residents, to represent them. And I need more definition of what that is, a refugee. Is it just, you know, you call someone a refugee and then you're going to bring them in? What's the financial burden to the people that I represent? They have a right to know that if I'm going to be deciding to spend their money on a refugee, you know what that is. And I think it's a pretty loose term right now. Refugee can be defined a certain way today. You say yes to refugee, how is it defined tomorrow? Can the definition change? And so, and the other thing too, if you're going to decide to say yes to refugees, and I'm representing Anoka County and the residents that live here, it should be that, I should be able to argue that point. I should be able to say, you know, "We're going to bring refugees here because in 10 years from now, there's going to be A, B, C, D, E, F, G great things, and it's a great decision." If I can't say that, then I might have to vote no.
Okay.
But there's going to be a lot of discussion on it. Hopefully, some of the things that I want to know as far as, you know, guarantees about definition, cost, is it certain countries, or is it just kind of à la carte, any country? You know, there's got to be a lot more definition to that term refugee because they're kind of compiling it all into just one word, and the word can change. And so...
More information, sir.
But if there isn't, if there isn't a definite answer to these questions, and if I can't go back to the residents and give them some guarantee about what I'm doing, the decision I made, and be able to defend it, then it's going to be no. If I can do that, then it might be yes.
Okay. You mentioned that you've had meetings with the Rice Creek Watershed Board, both of you, you said?
Yes, together.
Okay. This is how I understand this issue that came up most recently before the board, is that the watershed district board managers, Board of Managers President Patricia Priner is from Columbus in District 6, but not necessarily in the communities that are wholly within the watershed district or perhaps most impacted or most directly impacted by the watershed district. Places like Circle Pines, where the city manager is now standing before the board and saying, "We want to say, in these cities, we want to say who's on this board because of the tax implications that come from this board and the decisions that are made." So it's my understanding that Patricia Priner's reappointment was to be taken up by the Board of Commissioners, and Chair Schulte said, "No, no, I think, well, I have the authority to do this," he says, "but I think that we should wait until the winner of this District 6 seat is placed, voted in, and then that person can make this decision." So my question for you is, and this is a long, I know, it's a long question. Do you think that the board should have the ultimate say in this, or do you want to hear considerations from a city like Circle Pines or Centerville that say, "Listen, we've got a list of people in our city that we think is right for this." Would you want to hear from them? And the first to answer this will be Jeff.
Yeah, so that's something I definitely want to take a look at, and I'm glad that, you know, Schulte didn't act on that because affecting our area, I mean, you know, yeah, the person representing that area should have a say in that. And so I've heard from some folks on this, and yeah, there's a process that people want to follow. There's people that they want to be considered. And in the end, might be, you know, Pat might be the right person for the job, but I think we need to go through a process. Everything in government is a process. But we need to go through that process, and I'm willing to do that, and meet with the different city managers and the people that they would like to have in there and listen to their arguments. And at the end, I'm glad that the board did wait to make that decision because I'd like to be a part of it.
Cindy, what do you think? Very complex and a lot of different pieces of this, but where do you go with this?
Well, it was real nice when I talked to Pat on the phone. Then she told me that she wanted to organize an educational meeting for Jeff and I, and it was very educational and informative. And I also received word from the city administrators of the other cities that are involved in this, and they wanted to meet with me, and I suggested that we wait until after the election, when it's official, and that we would have a meeting. And they are looking forward to voicing their side of the story, so to speak. And I think that's real important to hear, what they have to say.
Okay, all right. You both mentioned endorsements already, and you've had support in various forms from current members of the Board of Commissioners, both written endorsements and in support with your door knocking efforts. It's out there, they were out there knocking, two of the members of the board were out there knocking on doors with you, we saw on a couple of occasions. So the question would be, how would you then serve on the board and work on working with members of the board who have already said publicly they would rather have seen the other person in that position? How would you work against someone who has come out in support of your opponent, Cindy?
Well, I've had a great working relationship with the board for the last, well, almost nine years, and I can't see that being an issue. I've been to board meetings, board activities since we've been running and been greeted very fairly by the other board members. And I think that was a really big step for both Mandy and Robin to come out and support me, so financially and out there on the doors for me, taking that risk, and I really appreciate it, and I don't feel that they think it is a risk.
Any risks Jeff? Any way to kind of proceed if you get on the board with these folks who have in very public ways supported your opponent?
Yeah, well, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you know, after elections, you know, the dust usually clears and everybody gets to work. After being on a council for 20 years, I think I counted up once, there's 14, 15 different people I've served with on that board. You know, you sit down, you get to, if you're there for the right reason, I mean, if you're there for the right reason, you can work with anybody that is also there for the right reason. And any kind of conflict that happens, I mean, that'll be dealt with when it is. I mean, you know, Matt Look came out and endorsed me. Personally, I, this whole endorsing thing with the board, I don't think that should be happening. There are some board members that, you know, lean left and lean right and all this kind of stuff, and you know, it kind of shows your cards, I guess, who's supporting you. But anyway, I think that, you know, there's been typically, they stay away from that.
And they've talked about staying away from it with the recent decision they made for county administrator. They talked about staying out of politics.
Well, how'd that work?
But yet, here we, I was going to say, here we are. I'm not calling that into question, I'm just asking how it works forward.
Yeah, well, going forward, I'm fine. You know, I mean, there's going to be, there's differences of opinion, there's differences of philosophy, difference of political positions. And, you know, most of the time, people can, on most any issue, you know, have a decent discussion, come out on the other side. And again, if you're there for the right reason, and that's to represent the people of Anoka County, politics a lot of times doesn't come into it. There are, you know, certain issues where, you know, it probably will, and those might, you know, end up being a little contentious, and that's fine. But for the most part, you know, we're all there to, you know, make good decisions for the residents of Anoka County, and, you know, specifically for me, you know, District 6.
Okay. One of the things that the board spends most of its time discussing is how to spend money, taxpayer money that the county has. Jeff, my question is, what is one thing you would like to see the county spend less on?
Wow. I think there's a lot of things I'm going to take a look at once I get in there. On the front end though, it's going to be tax equity. And I've talked about that before, where, you know, it's going to be, you know, a lot of people in my area, you know, have a feeling that they're paying more in taxes and services that they get back, and, you know, some of the roads we drive on and how wait, we have to wait for repairs, you know, definitely show that. But that's going to be something that we can do fairly quick, I think, do an analysis on that and see if that's true or not. You know, it's a statement that I've heard for years. Spend less on? Healthcare. You've heard me talk about this before. Both Lino Lakes, you know, where I spent the last 20 years serving, and Anoka County, both have gone up, their healthcare's gone up an average of 9% a year. We've seen increases of upwards of 28, 29% some years. There are models out there, and I've talked about that before, you know, different unions that have self-insured. One in particular, Twin City Pipe Trades, they have 5,000 members, they decided to self-insure eight years ago. They've seen, since they've started that program, they've seen an increase of 0% in the last eight years. So where Anoka County health insurance costs have doubled, more than doubled, in the last eight years, and Lino Lakes as well, you know, they've seen a 0%, double zero. So that's something that I'd like to spend a lot of time on. I know some consultants in this area of self-insurance and how we can do that. And I would encourage the board, when we get in there, to try to get them interested in some of these alternative methods that are available for providing health insurance. And when I talk about this and saving money, I'm not talking about cutting services because what Twin City Pipe Trades has experienced is an incredible increase in services that they're able to provide while cutting the cost. A lot of people are getting wealthy, and that's usually the people that are in between. And so if you can cut out the middleman, it doesn't have to be the way it is.
What do you think Cindy? What do you think the county, one thing the county you think could spend less of its money on?
Well, I hear your question, but I heard his answer, and that frightens me. That really, really frightens me because Jeff came up with this brilliant plan of destroying a fire department to save money too.
No, that's not why we did it.
Well...
That's not why we did it.
I have the figures, this is my time to speak now.
Well, if you're going to attack me though, I'm going to respond. That's not why we did it.
Okay. The three cities of Lino Lakes, Centerville, and Circle Pines had a fire district, a 30-year successful joint powers agreement. When Jeff became mayor, I don't know if you can see this, or if you can zoom in, but, and these are figures from the city administrator of Lino Lakes.
Well, if you could just, maybe just quickly summarize that.
Okay.
We don't, we don't want to...
Finish your attack before I can respond.
$525,842 is what the taxpayers of Lino Lakes were splitting for the fire district while he was mayor. Then when he destroyed this fire department...
Oh boy.
...it jumped to $1,019,886.
Yeah, no it didn't.
Yes, these are figures from your city administrator. And now that is up to...
Well, you're clumping in a lot of things, but obviously, you're, these are bogus, bogus, bogus.
Cindy, I understand what you're saying, and I've got to get, I need Jeff to have a chance to respond.
Okay, well, when he talks though, about how he's going to save money on insurance, this is what scares me because no, we did not save any money and we are not any safer.
Okay.
In fact, SBM has to respond to fire calls in certain areas of Lino Lakes.
Anything you want to see the county spend less on?
Health insurance, how's that?
Okay. Very quickly, whole elections in Lino Lakes were shaped by this. It's still, there's still ramifications felt. Very quickly, your response to what Cindy said.
Well, I hope you have a safe room for Cindy because she's scared. But the numbers that she put out there are not true. She's clumping in a lot of things, I'm sure. I don't know where she's getting all these numbers to put in there, but our cost of insurance last, or for our fire department last year was a little north of $600,000. It's about what it was before the break. She might be adding in the fire station that we built, which was going to be built anyway.
She said you did it to save money. You said over and over, "No, that's not why I did it." One sentence, why'd you do it? Just so you could clear that one up.
Okay. Yeah, 30, 45 seconds, how's that? So we, I was on the Fire Steering Committee for 11 years. What I saw was them going on on every single call, they didn't need to. You need to go on maybe 20, 30% of the calls. They were burning people out. They kept on saying, "Well, because of that, we have to hire more and more full-time fire department people." So it's like, full-time, full-time. The problem is, is that we were, it was 70% of the cost was on our shoulders, we were only getting 55% of the service, and we only had 33% of the vote. It's the 33% of the vote that I had a problem with because we were getting outvoted all the time. I wasn't trying to gain an advantage by changing the vote. I was trying to save our city from being at a disadvantage. And so what I did is I brought the topic to the steering committee, and I said, "Look, we got to change this governance because we're being outvoted. You guys are spending a lot more money, a lot more money. We're paying the bill." Those two cities were already built out. Our city has a lot more build-out to go yet, and so that 70% is going to go to 80% and probably 90% someday.
Okay.
And we only had 33% of the vote, and we just got tired of them spending our money.
And those city administrators and councils...
So we didn't want to...
Wanted to work with you, and you refused to work with them, Jeff.
No, no, I worked with them for years.
Okay.
And we put out a proposal, that was a different governance, and they said no.
Okay.
And so the vote was on their part to not work with us anymore.
Okay. Let's try something else. How about this? Let's try this Cindy.
Okay.
What would you like to see the county spend more of its resources and more taxpayer dollars on?
More money on our infrastructure so that more businesses will want to come to other areas in the county.
Perhaps more rural areas, or perhaps diversify what's already in built-up areas?
All of the above. And I really would like to see them spend more money too, and I know they're promoting it, but the technical corridor.
Okay, okay.
I think that has some great potential.
Okay.
And I have experience working successfully with a two-county, three-city joint powers agreement, and that will be working with two counties and five cities.
Okay, all right. Jeff, we don't, often hear politicians talking about spending more money, but if the county could devote more resources to something, do you have an idea?
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. I think once I get in there, I'll find efficiencies like I did in Lino Lakes. And what we've been able to do is increase services across the board, you know, like back, we were spending a quarter million dollars a year on maintenance and repairs and road reconstruction. We're spending a million and a half dollars, not because we just raised it and decided to spend more. We're spending 600 times more now because we were running the city efficiently and we would be able to shift those dollars to other areas that need it. So we've got a, you know, comprehensive pavement management system, we've got parks and trails now, we've been putting more money into, and that's just running efficiently. So you bring the level of activity, you have the level of activity, you bring your resources down to that. Government always likes to push resources up and have too much. And if you apply business principles to government, which it can be done, you can run more efficiently, have more dollars for those things you need. I don't think you need to spend more money. The tech corridor that Cindy brought up, glad she's in favor of it. Michael Gershala and I about five years ago started pushing for that because I was looking for some development in Lino Lakes that was low-impact. And we kept on talking about, and then we started talking about this tech corridor. And tech development is great for Lino Lakes because it is high-value, low-impact on the community. You can have a $500 million project come in and have 150 people working there. And so, and those jobs are going to be good jobs. So it's something that was a lot of work, and we got a lot of different people involved. And yeah, Anoka County's involved too. Had some meetings recently when I was still mayor with the board, and it's moving forward. So we've got some good opportunity, and there's...
It was just one thing, I only answered for one thing.
There's some projects that are going on right now, I can't really talk too much about, but it's going to be good for the area.
The Minnesota Tech Corridor, something that they agree on, how about that? There we go. That's a good thing to kind of wrap up here. We, I have one more question for you though, a wacky kind of election calendar. This seat will then be, as I understand it, this seat will now be open again in November because this is fulfilling what was left on Ron DeSantis' term. So that means you would have to file, you should win this election in a few weeks, and then have to file again for the primaries in relatively short order. So my question is, win or lose, I'm going to check my notes here, okay. Win or lose, will you run again, Jeff?
Oh, I think things are looking pretty good, but yeah, I probably would. Why not?
Okay. Win or lose, Cindy, will you run again?
Definitely.
For the District 6?
Definitely.
Okay, all right. So let's wrap up here with just a quick, a little bit of a closing statement here. And Cindy will go first on this very quickly. Why should folks vote for you?
Well, first, thank you for having me Rusty. And I think it's obvious by, if you look at the time I spoke and the time that Jeff spoke, I listen to people. I hear what you say, and that scares me. And I have facts and figures, I'll be posting them on my Facebook page so you can see what really happened. Talk to a fireman, talk to a policeman. I am so afraid of what he destroyed at the city level and what he plans on destroying at the county level. Please, I humbly ask for your vote February 11th.
And finally, for one last pitch, we turn to Jeff Reiner. Jeff, why should folks vote for you?
Okay, yeah, so I've always looked at running for office like applying for a job. And Anoka County has a $300 million budget, 2,000 employees, fourth-largest county in the state. the state. You got to have somebody in there that knows what they're doing. I've got a fantastic track record as far as what I've been doing. And I think that I'd be the best person for the job. And I'd ask everyone for their vote on February 11th.
All right. Thank you very much. Former Lino Lakes Mayor Jeff Reiner, former Spring Lake Park Mayor Cindy Hansen here for this discussion, a spirited one at that. And the polls, again, the special election for the District Six seat on the Anoka County Board of Commissioners comes up on February 11th. A busy election day in Lino Lakes, also a special election to fill an open city council seat there as well. Thank you for joining us for our local decision coverage here on North Metro TV. You'll find more of this at northmetrotv.com. I'm Rusty Ray.